Okay, ready, stand for pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the other power for which stands on the nation under.
As a way of respecting, honoring, and creating awareness about our past, we begin our village board meetings by acknowledging acknowledging that New Falls is on the ancestral land of the Monchi Asopin Lenape people. Uh, please check out our agendas in a minute and help us add to our list of ways to truly support indigenous communities.
A few things I need to add to the consent and business agendas. Um, under item number two, be alternate parade route regarding the ride for mental health. That's in the consent agenda and within the business agenda. First thing I want to add is um arrange for a yield to pedestrian sign to be placed at the crosswalk on South Vanheim at the Ridge Apartments. Item number 10. Um, are several asks of the New York State DOT. Item number 11, authorizing the treasurer to begin the process to borrow $2.1 million to fund the connection of for drinking water wells. At the water treatment plant property on Mountain Rest Road, item number 12. A request to waive the 30 day waiting period for liquor license for underground coffee and Ls. At 36 Main, are you guys okay if I move that to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. And that is it, so I. Move that and oh, yeah, the Arbor Day, I missed that, sorry. 16. The resolution regarding Arbor Day declaration. A move that we accept. The consent agenda and business agendas as amended and I also move the consent agenda. All in favor, I. Do we have announcements from? Any trustees, but?
Um, so Saturday, we're gonna give it a try again for um the uh beautification day of the newly reformed beautification committee. Um, it's the same signup link um as before, still says the old date from when it was like really cold and rainy, but um the plan is same time, locations, but on Saturday, as long as the weather is good. Um, April 20th is the Earth Day Fair on Huguenot Street is the 21st annual one and um, we are going to have a pretty amazing table with a billion activities, so definitely make sure to put that on your calendar and come on down. Um, and April 30th is a town hall on a green new deal for housing, um hosted by Assembly Member Shrestha and her amazing team. So that's Tuesday, April 30th at 6:30 PM at the Ulster County Restorative Justice Center on Broadway in Kingston. Um, and I have a little link that I'm gonna send to Autumn to make sure that gets into the minutes. Um, but questions can also be directed to Assembly Member Shrestha's office at District 103 at NYAssembly.gov or 845-338-9610. Basically, the Assembly Member and like a bunch of other um elected officials and housing justice, like advocates and activists across the state had gone to Vienna um last year to learn from the leaders in Vienna about social housing, about green housing, how it all kind of interconnects. So um this is gonna be an opportunity to learn more about um, you know, about the Green New Deal for housing. And then um I think it will be a good precursor for there's gonna be another town hall specifically just on social housing, but it all connects. So yeah, I'm excited for that one. Um, on Saturday, May 4th, there is the Housing Speak Out taking place in Keys Park. Um, the groups working on that are working on like resource guides and like resource packages to kind of give out to um, which is why I'm really excited, taking place right by the Free Food Bridge. Um, that's that day, Saturday, May 4th, is also the date for the 13th Annual Riverkeeper Sweep. Um, and the signups are now live for all the locations um all and all over the place, including, of course, um, the Walco. Um, Saturday, June 1st is the annual Pride Marketing Festival. Um, the vendor uh signup is live. And uh, there is a website coming um in the next few days, I believe. So I'll just keep sharing that out on social for for now, but people are welcome to reach out to me. Um, you know, have any questions and I'll redirect you to the right subcommittee. Uh, the Public Service Commission still needs to hear from all of us. Um, there's no limit on how many times you make a comment, also, I found out um regarding needing a central Hudson rate reduction, not an increase. So um, keep an eye out on social media and of course, on our website, we posted a while back, there's um easy link created by Assembly Member Shrestha's um team uh to submit that comment to the Public Service Commission. Narcan and other harm reduction services are available anywhere in Ulster County, thanks to Allenville Regional's Project Rescue Program. And you can text ERHrescue to 21000 and they can hook you up with Narcan, harm reduction supplies like test kits, snort kit, sex kits. Uh, the Never Use Alone hotline is 1-877-696-1996. Narcan Trains are always available online at opioid prevention NP slash Narcan dash training. And of course, we're outside Village Halls, our Free Food Bridge, which is available to everyone all the time. Um, donations are always much needed and appreciated, just make sure you label the ingredients. That's it for now.
Anything else from board colleagues?
I got one. Um, Village of New Falls is currently in the process of doing spring cleanup. They started on Monday and residents who are on the north side of Main Street started, as I said, on Monday and are going through the 12th. And collections for residents who live on the south side of Main Street will begin on April 15th and end on the 19th. And they need to put out their waste by April 15th for it to be picked up. And that includes um bagged yard waste in fire debatable bags only. Brush, wood, no more than four tires per household, batteries, small appliances, metal, two mattresses for residents and furniture. Two people must be able to lift all items. That's good for me.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move that we open the public hearing for the tentative budget for uh fiscal year 20 uh 2024 through 2025, so it starts June 1st through May 31st of 2005. Anyone from the public want to make a comment on our tentative budget?
For our second opening of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Hi.
Have we gotten any comments? I wrote something up today, I'll circulate it later, it's just um discussing uh parking revenue and the budget. Just like a little one and a half page explanation.
Cool, yeah.
Um.
It's tough with the state, you know, just not having the budget yet.
Yeah.
Just thinking, you know, what the world is gonna look like is always like a question. Um, I don't know how people did it in the days when they were always like many months late, but
Right.
I don't think there will be many months late.
So the guidelines that we have from the state require us to close this public hearing before April 20th. Our next meeting is April 24th. So I'm gonna suggest that we close the public hearing tonight. However, if the community wants to get in touch with us, they can do so in a less formal way. But then I will propose to our board that we adopt our budget. Um, assuming things don't become more complicated at our April 24th meeting.
I'm okay with that, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
Bye. So moving on to our business agenda, Joe Bernary is here from our Public Works Department and Joe um keeps me in the loop regarding the condition of our heavy trucks and our capital planning. And sometimes, and and we've been working on um purchasing a truck that we hope to take delivery on this year, but one of our larger trucks needed some repairs. It's almost 20 years old, it's definitely 19 years old, has it reached its 20th year yet, Joe, the one that we're talking about this evening?
Yeah, it's a 2005, we got it in, I think, September of 05, when I first started.
Right, so the 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 problem that we ran into is that um the outfit that we used to service our trucks, who are generally very good at being creative, um told us that it's too hard to get replacement parts, they would not be able to um green light putting this truck back out on the road, so we're faced with an emergency situation where it would be prudent to go ahead and replace that. Joe's looked into some options on the most affordable way to replace this truck. But um I'll let you provide some additional detail, um because I I feel like the board is is appreciative when they hear directly from yourself and and public work staff, you know, so that we can all do better job of wrapping our heads around some of these decisions, so the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm always appreciative of uh you letting me come on here and basically pleading our case for why we need to replace stuff and, you know, we, like you said, we tried to keep up on it on everything pretty good. Um, and who we use for all our inspections and repairs that, you know, I can't handle and, you know, when the town's too busy to to help us out. Um, they said this truck was in some pretty bad shape. And being they don't make this truck anymore, parts are no longer required to be available after five years of a of vehicle being made. So that adds into the complex of trying to fix things. Um, I got lucky enough that the company that we were buying the grant truck with, well, the second company, the company that we're getting the grant truck with now had some other trucks coming in that fit our needs. And, you know, we we had to go back and forth with options and stuff, but we got finally got it to, you know, a reasonable price. Um, that's gonna work out for us and this truck is basically just a little bit smaller than the grant truck, but all the different bodies that we're getting with the grant truck, like the chip box. Um, the containers, flatbed, they'll work between both trucks. And to have two trucks that are similar is good because if one goes down, you still have another one as a backup and then all those bodies aren't, you know, useless per se. Um.
Joe, so this this truck that's um that we're gonna use as an emergency replacement, this also has the same uh Cummins drive chain that is considered kind of state of the art as far as like an energy efficient diesel truck, similar to the 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 truck that you're referring to as the grant truck, so that's the $300,000 grant award from the state and municipal program that Senator Hinchey secured on our behalf, so are these both considered comparably energy efficient?
Yep, but I'm almost positive they're the same motors, I think the grant truck might have a little bit more horsepower in it because it's a little bit heavier of a truck, but it's still Cummins motor, same, I'm pretty sure it's the same same model, just however, I don't know how they they get more horsepower out of it, I don't know if it's programming or what all these newer ones, but yeah, it's the same low emissions uh truck.
So in addition to getting a new truck, we're by the end of the year, we should have two new trucks that um are pollute a whole lot less than than both of the trucks that we have now. The the one that uh will be replaced with the grant money and then this truck that's nearly 20 years old.
Yeah, this this one we should have by the end of May, beginning of June, and the grant truck tentatively, he said, um, hopefully maybe the middle, middle of August, September, the latest.
And our plan for paying for this truck um that I've worked on with our treasurer is that we'll we're we're not gonna buy it um imminently, we're going to take delivery uh in the next fiscal year and we'll we'll pay for it uh via a a bond uh along with um some of the other bonding that we'll have to roll up and and uh secure.
Yeah, I mean, it it.
So I'm I'm just emphasizing that um we do not want to take delivery until after June 1st.
Yep, that's not a not a problem whatsoever. Um, I talked to the to them today and they said that was no big deal. Um, he's actually gonna give us, um, when we get this truck, um, the chip box slash leaf box that we were getting with the grant truck, he's actually gonna order that now for us and let us take that earlier and just worry about paying for it when we get when we get the grant truck. So that way we have, we have that as well, so if that truck takes a little bit longer to get ready, you know, if it's in September, at least we'll be, we'll be all set up for leaf season, because the truck that that got deemed no longer um fit for the road, that was our leaf truck too.
Okay, so the the truck that we're replacing with the grant truck and then this um truck that uh we are not able to get inspected, we're gonna sell both of those trucks via an auction process with absolute auction, so that's the the second thing here on our um agenda under uh fleet updates. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and move that we authorize an emergency purchase for the truck that we just discussed. And then also authorize permission to list those two trucks to be auctioned off.
Second that.
Any further discussion, questions for Joe?
Just thank you so much for coming um and for, you know, always looking out for all of this. I'm really excited that we're gonna be able to be lowering our greenhouse gas emissions um.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. No problem, you know, I I appreciate you guys letting me come on. You know, I appreciate him, he always, he's always there to to listen to my wants and our needs and, you know, I try, we just did one of our smaller dump trucks, we um I did a little bit of rehab on it, we put a new dump body on there. Um, it was nine years old this spring. And uh we're putting the new dump body on, hopefully we can get another, at least another five years out of it, if not, if not more. So, you know, we're trying, I mean, we're slowly, we have 27 pieces of equipment between trucks and equipment and trailers and mowers. So it's like, you almost have to do at least one a year. You know, then by time you get through everything, you'll have to start all over, all over again, so we're we're almost to the point where we're pretty much caught up, the only other two pieces, big expensive pieces of equipment that will be next is uh the loader and the sweeper. Um, after that, all the really big ticket items have been replaced within the last six years.
And I think it's also really important to emphasize too, though, that you and I brainstorm about the possibility of buying things on a regular basis, you're you're regularly bringing ideas to me and myself and Nancy and and I and I credit you too in that we don't just green light buying uh things just because, you know, it's it's close to the top of our wish list, I I I think it's important to emphasize that, you know, it's a dynamic process. You are also uh understanding of that, you know, a lot of times we'll have something that we think is important to consider, but we might have other capital projects staring us in the face and we we have to be patient at times, we have to um you know, see where other things land and maybe space out some of these large purchases, so, you know, I you know, I I'm thankful that, you know, when you do some of this research and you come to uh pitch me on the possibility of of buying something, you also are, you know, receptive when I have to say no, or I have to say, hey, let's talk about this in a few months. And and I I feel like, you know, you understand that our role as fiduciaries is that we can't just green light anything and everything, that we have a responsibility and, you know, I think that's one of the reasons that we have uh tentative budget here that doesn't include a increase to the tax rate.
Yeah, a hundred percent, and, you know, like, we wanted to replace the loader back in the beginning of the year and that was top on the list and then, you know, like, this truck came about and you know, good thing we didn't buy that because then, you know, we wouldn't have the money probably to go ahead with this truck. And to be honest, this truck's more important, I mean, at at the moment, we're down two big trucks, so by by getting this one as soon as we can, it it helps us out a lot and to also add uh about putting it up for auction, uh the auction company was here today. He took all all the pictures and all the info that he needed, so, you know, you guys just approved it, so tomorrow Heather can email them and probably within the next week, or if not sooner, they'll be, they'll be up for auction. So we can see what we can get for them.
Yeah, very good, yeah, the loader, the loader's a great example of like something that we've been considering for some time and, you know, because we're prudent and and careful, then we didn't box ourselves into a corner now and we're facing this emergency purchase of of this truck, so, you know, thanks for for working with us and being patient.
No problem, we'll just have to try to get some more money out of Senator Hinchey's office for the next purchase.
I was gonna say on that end, you know, when that truck is, you know, in our hands, we'll have to invite her to come, check it out, she loves, like, seeing, you know, like, all the inaction.
Yeah, I missed, I missed that opportunity to to meet her, she was here in Highland at a local restaurant doing some sort of uh event about a month or so ago, I couldn't, I wanted to go and actually meet her and introduce myself, but I wasn't able to, but I'm sure she'll she'll be more than willing.
She'll be back.
Yep. So.
All right, thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you, guys, have a good night.
See you tomorrow.
Yep, see you tomorrow.
Did we vote or did we?
Did we vote? All in favor?
Hi.
Bye. And um number two on this agenda, so we have um a proposal from Ted Nitsa in terms of a design for a solar array at the fire station, we're gonna put that on the agenda for April 24th and and take a hard look at um the work that Ted and his team did and ideally will um have an RFP available for installers to um respond to. Okay, next item is the co-terminus government discussion. I would like to remove the word co-terminus and just refer to it as consolidation.
Because co-terminus is one specific route.
It's a very specific route and the research that I've done, I don't believe, you know, if if stars align, that we'll end up with a co-terminus townwide village. Uh, but our update.
Consolidation is like the umbrella term, right? Sorry, I didn't.
It's 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 definitely an umbrella term, but it also is a very specific path, like we would be the first municipality in New York State to pursue consolidation under Article 17A, if this were to happen.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's also just more understood is what it is rather than co-terminus, at least like from my cohort, you know, I get questions like, what is that, what do you mean?
Yeah, absolutely, it's it's actually a super simple concept, just the idea of like shared boundaries, like in this case, the town and village would have shared boundaries, um but it's it's specific in terms of the route. But I'm proposing we just stop using that word.
Okay.
And and so the update is just that um our board has all spoken um to me directly and indicated which of the two consultants that we received proposals from, we're waiting for our colleagues at the town board um to let us know if they have strong opinions about one consultant versus another. Um, and then our next step would be to go ahead and and engage uh one of the two consultants that we received proposals from. Um, the next item is the position statement. Um, this has to do with the appropriate definition of family. Um, that was circulated before our last meeting and um, a couple um Stana wasn't here, I know Stana was particularly interested in in this discussion, so we wanted to to wait um to have a fuller board discussion. Um, when you were here, so do we want to go ahead and take an action this evening?
Yeah, I feel comfortable, um, you know, like I felt like that was like a really good exercise and and discussion, we leaned into the different resources we have in the community to really learn all the ins and outs of what these words mean and we have a good understanding.
Right, I I think it's a, it's a, it's a tricky thing, right, because the 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 concept of family is is nuanced and, you know, everyone probably has their own picture in their head of what a family is, unlike a word like co-terminus. So what we needed to do was really to lean into um creating a position statement where we actually use New York State case law and uniform building code definitions so that we could provide something that was less shades of gray for our planning board colleagues and our building department staff, so, you know, that was the the goal as far as um you know, just creating this position statement. Um, and I and I think it came out really well, we had a a good discussion at our last meeting and the meeting before that, um. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead.
Because I had this thought the other day, um, so New York State has the equal rights amendment on the ballot this November, um, you know, it's one of those uh referendums that you flip the ballot over and quote yes or no, and um it's it's huge and I was thinking about our code and how I really, really love how our code and again, our statement on fam, the word family, um, really makes clear that, quote, in the event of any conflict between our definition and the definition of family, um, you know, between us and like New York State, like defer to New York State, and so, like, as we're looking at, like, you know, really expanding codifying protections of like people um in 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 really um important ways that are different than other states, um, I I really think our code having that little tidbit is like so on point, that's all I want to say.
Nice, yeah.
Yeah.
That seems like that could be a, that language could be applicable in a lot of different ways.
Yeah. All right, so now I'm ready.
Did someone second my motion, all in favor?
Hi.
And so we have a a draft law regarding the amendment to our affordable housing law. Um, actually, I would like to take, I I was not able to take a closer look at this as as I had intended. Did anyone else take a closer look or?
I still am grappling with um like Adele's comments about um, how to address the amenities issue.
Okay.
And I've been looking back at old meetings from like. And I've been looking back at old meetings from like when our law was first established and stuff because it's like. I keep, so I'm just gonna be honest, like I keep waffling between like, oh, well, the law, like that part of it is like already clear. Or it should be, you know, enough like to be guidance. But then I keep thinking about how it was difficult when. There was confusion, you know, with tenants who um, you know, did get the affordable units, um, you know, and. Like weren't granted the same access and it kind of created this like confusion trying to figure out like what 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 went wrong, like what. So, yeah, I'm still just grappling with that, to be quite frank. Um, I could stop grappling with it. Um.
Well, why don't, why don't we um, why don't we take the draft that we have and mark it up, put in some suggested edits and circulate it. Amongst each of us, so.
Yeah, because it really seems to me like the like initial spirit of the law, like really did have that emphasis on that, like, you know, the the. There should be no difference between um. What an affordable like tenant. Gets access to versus like the like market rate tenants, you know, um.
Yeah, the only difference is just that the um, the wording could be tighter. And and I think that's the thing. It's like, we've already had a public hearing. We received public feedback. So we're not looking to change the spirit of the draft law that we circulated. We're just wanting to make sure that the language is as clear as possible.
And I, yeah, that was a very, I think. Very poignant comment that was made, you know, um, that I would like to just take another look at, yeah.
Alright, so take a look and then circulate your suggested edits. Um, parking meter zones, so. I put this on our agenda um because the section around. Hasbrook Park on Hasbrook Avenue, the the rules for. When you can or cannot park there are different than the other sides of the park. And it just feels like that would be an example of like. Where you'd want consistency. Um, I'm a huge proponent of like. I went to Poughkeepsie recently and I parked my car and I was reading all the signs and triple checking that I was. Reading the signs correctly because it said meter parking twenty-four seven. Um, I even went into the establishment where I went and I said, is this actually enforced? Um, but, you know, anytime you go anywhere, I don't know, I'm I've conditioned myself to. You know, read signs because no one wants to get a parking ticket. Um, so I think that's. You know. A best practice, but also if there are inconsistencies within our code and, you know, we all do this when we. We read our code, you know, kind of like this affordable housing law. Could the language be a little bit tighter, more clear? And I feel like the Hasbrook Park perimeter example is a good one, and there may be some other things. And I think Stevie. You have volunteered to take a closer look. So almost like just go into ECO three sixty. And just read it like, like a a layperson and be like, if I was reading this stuff. You know, would I edit it or would I keep it as is? Like, like, don't overthink um. You you know, looking at it through any sort of technical lens, just like look at it through like your best common sense lens and then. Bring it back to us and um, then we can all chew on it as a group and see if we wanna make some updates.
She hasn't printed out.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So you've already started doing exactly that. Do you want to add in anything?
I was just gonna, I I was actually gonna go physically walk something after talking to Alex and all.
Yeah, I I've I find that the, I mean, that's kind of. The the nice things about like being an elected official in this community is like years ago, I looked at like. All the handicap spots and I went to our code and I was like, there were X number of handicap spots, but then when you go out into the field and they don't necessarily align. Um, because maybe things were. You know, signed, but then not updated in the code or vice versa. There were things in the code that weren't signed and, you know, it it's. It's not unusual to find some of those inconsistencies. So it's, it's like, yeah, you know, read it. Take a nice walk. Certainly, um.
Yeah.
The time of year when walks are nicer.
I think also it's like easy to miss the inconsistencies when we were only looking at like. It all written down in the code, we're at this table. Like, that's what Stevie and I were talking about before. It's so different than when you're like actually figuring out. Where to park and like the different clusters, you know, like how the park is a cluster, you know, and then you've got like other kind of clusters.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like, I'll I'll often use the parking app. Just because I want to make sure that it's working correctly, you know, because we hear grumblings that, oh, I had this experience or that experience and. I actually appreciated it. This morning, we had our town gown meeting with the emergency service folks and the college and the town and. And um, the rescue chief, Matt Goodnow. We, we uh walked up to Village Hall at the same time. He drove up, I walked up. And he was parking across the way. And I'm like, Matt, just park in front of the building because. And he's like, no, I want to make sure that I know how to use the app. It's like, I totally understand. And and uh. You know, it's like those kind of audits are are pretty helpful. Um, okay, so we'll we'll circle back on that. And then um. Building use report, report and discussion on pricing request from. New Paul's Pride Coalition General Sexuality Group to waive insurance for a monthly meeting on the second Thursdays. Um, okay, so Stana, you had done some research. You wanna, I'll I'll let you take it.
It all started because we were trying to figure out what to charge for what used to be the fire station base for the trucks. Um. So I looked at what we were already charging for meeting room and what the town charges. Um, for the spaces that they rent out. Um, and it looks to me as though, you know, the prices were pretty low. For um, when you compared us to the town in particular. Um, for instance, you know, um. They are like thirty dollars an hour on weekdays for the um, community center. And, you know, currently a one-time use for two hours for our meeting room is ten dollars. So let's, that's kind of a big difference.
Don't we also have some distinctions for like community groups versus?
Absolutely, right. Yeah. So, um, you know, the way the town does it is if you're a resident of the town versus not. We, the way I did it was similar to what we had in the past, which was, um, you know. Whether it's something that's, you know, just for like a community group, it is gonna be one price. Versus if someone's here like for commercial use, um. Those are the the difference, different prices that I proposed. Um, we're still gonna, I mean, depending on what we choose, but what I had proposed was just changing the initial two-hour fee to twenty dollars. And then, you know, just upping each of the other things as well, just a bit like that was. Um. So for instance, if you have a monthly recurring meeting and we pay it annually, it'd be a hundred and twenty-five dollars annually for the two hours. So you get every, you know, Thursday from seven to nine or whatever it is. Um, and that still seems quite reasonable to me.
Yeah.
I'm curious about it.
Yeah, it makes sense for us to not have as high prices because, you know, you got a group of Girl Scouts or. You know, whatever, like they're like people are paying for, like, depending when it is, like, there's meters for like the nearby parking here, whereas like. There isn't around the community center, for example. Um, you know, and then of course, just like keeping in mind, like. The different um demographics, like census wise and in terms of affordability, so um. Yeah, but I think I think you're taking that into account. So, yeah.
But our our, we've never made a distinction between town versus village people, just like the town. We're like New Paltz community members.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't make that distinction.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, just realizing we shouldn't be at.
Commercial use versus non, you know, like just a community group, you know, that wants to have a meeting. Or use the space. I also noted that, you know, there's a big difference between. The community center and here, they have tables and chairs and a kitchen and all kinds of stuff that we don't really, I mean, I guess have a kitchen, but it's not really in working order. So, and you know, a smaller space.
So the schedule that you've circulated, are you proposing we adopt that?
Yes, unless other people feel as though. You know, it's too high or too low.
No, that, I think the dollar amount changes that you proposed makes sense. Um. So I I'm fine with um.
Yeah, I just. As of now was ninety dollars actually, and I just went up to twenty-five. It's not a huge change. I don't feel like.
Okay.
And then were we also going to look at the garage space of that?
Um, for nonprofit community groups, it's the same prices as the as this room because I didn't. I feel like that room is more of a law space. We have tables and chairs in here. We got the bathroom, you get, you know, this has heat. That does not, you know, um, so I just kept it this to the same prices. Um. But uh as far as an hourly use beyond like a two-hour, you know, stint. Um, anything over town, two hours, I just said we charge an additional ten dollars an hour and commercial uses thirty dollars an hour.
Do we have any stipulations? So I I think what happens, because I've seen this with like some of the the ball fields where some of our sister organizations have. Issues where someone comes in, we're like, cool, I'll rent it all the time. And then that that's. Hard because the idea with these spaces is that they're supposed to be. Available for as many different community groups as possible, as opposed to just whoever asked first.
Right.
Do we do have any, yeah? Yeah, a- and maybe we just stay mindful of that and I don't know. But then it's weird because then how do you, where do you draw the line and say that you can't do that?
I like, I I also, I think we could wait and see how many people are interested. Um, and you know, and get a feel for what what the complex might be. And then if there's an issue, we can.
I think what's interesting is pre-COVID, you know, upstairs where my office is, like nearly every night of the week. There was like one or two groups using those conference rooms, whereas like now it's a ghost town.
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's, let's just.
Requests, so that's why.
Maybe because now people know how to use video.
Yeah, I think also just, I know it's an issue with groups, you know, like. Having to, because we have to have this space for meetings and stuff and like, like, there isn't like a second space, you know. Like, I think that's why it's like also left people than they used to because there is the backside room.
Right, and those upstairs rooms are available and we checked with our attorney. So. You know, the thing that we like about this space is that it's ADA compliant because there's no ramps, no elevators, no mechanicals. Um, involved, but a third party that's not a government group can, like, we can't have like the Shade Tree Commission. Use one of those upstairs meeting rooms, but a third party group. Can, because then they can disclose to their.
Yeah.
Invitees that, you know, it's stairs only. And then that's on on them to, you know, so. We're separate from.
Right. If they have differently able people, they just take into account which room they would want.
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess you are right. It's Zoom. Anyway, this all sounds good.
Right, and that that was, that was when we brainstormed with groups. They said, well, the the solution to that is they like, well, we will meet upstairs where there are stairs and we are making sure that. Differently able folks can participate via Zoom. So that's, you know, another. Um, advantage to the fact that we all learned how to to use it. You know, okay, um, do you want to move to um?
I propose that we adopt the changes to the prices for renting out different spaces we have available.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then the next item here is that the Pride Coalition's General Sexuality Group. They were asking for the insurance to be waived so that they could meet. Um, once per month on second Thursdays from seven to eight. I think that's a very reasonable request. I mean. My understanding with like. The insurance piece is like, it's very different to have an event outside versus an event. In a building. Also, um. Attorneys always want us to get more insurance and layers of insurance, but we have liability insurance. Like if something. God forbid, were to occur, there's liability insurance. Attorney's always like the additional layers of protection, but um. You know, we want groups to meet here. We want community groups to, you know, use their collectively owned. Building assets. So I move that we uh accept that request for a waiver. All in favor? And the next item, um, who wants to take that?
Um, so basically, there's yet another pipeline expansion proposal. Like, it feels like Groundhog Day. Um, and um, a lot of municipalities in the area are. Working on basically the same um resolution to let the governor know we don't want that. Um. So this is a resolution urging the government of New York to deny the Iroquois Pipeline Expansion. Whereas a proposed expansion of the thirty-year-old Iroquois natural gas pipeline will significantly increase. The fracked gas volume escalating environmental and health risks in Hudson Valley. And whereas emissions from compressor station, compressor stations release pollutants like nitrogen oxide and the carcinogen benzene. Um, proven to cause serious health threats, thus violating New Yorkers' right to a clean and healthy environment under the Green Amendment. And whereas historical data documents that natural gas pipeline infrastructure, including compressor stations, pose significant safety hazards. Evidenced by frequent incidents of leaks, explosions, and resulted fatalities and environmental damage. And whereas the pipeline's expansion is in direct conflict with New York's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, CLCPA. Statutory goals fostering continued reliance on fossil fuels and undermining the state's statutorily required transition. To a sustainable and renewable energy future. And whereas Governor Hokel has a responsibility and the authority to protect New York's environment. And public health and to ensure the full implementation of the CLCPA with the power to deny this expansion. As it is in direct conflict with the state law and thus the state's environmental and health priorities. And so now therefore it will resolve that the village of New Paltz calls on Governor Hokel to immediately deny the permit for the Iroquois. Natural gas pipeline expansion, thereby upholding New York's CLCPA and the state's environmental standards and commitment to a sustainable future. And be further resolved that will direct our clerk to send this off to all the other electeds. Um, you know, from the county on up to the federal government. Um, so I move to. Um, pass this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for putting it together.
Keep you posted on the fight um as it continues. We are hopeful that just getting every municipality in our region to. Make a little bit of noise. We'll kind of squash it right away, but we'll see. Yeah.
Okay. So the next item on this agenda is, um, so in the past, um, the process when we need. A yield to pedestrian sign, those are the signs that we put in crosswalks. When we put them on state highways, like if it's on a village road, we can just do it on our own. Um, but we need permission from the DOT to do it. And. In the past, they've said, okay, and then we buy a sign and then we place it in the crosswalk. And then what's interesting about these signs is they're basically three-season signs. They're not in the roads during plowing season. Um. And they get beat up. Um, and they get beat up and moved. Um, but I think they are useful. They, they definitely, um, I think. Give pedestrians a sense that, okay, this is where I'm allowed to be, or this is where I should be. And I think they send a message to vehicle operators that. There, there may be pedestrians coming through. The thing that I think is super fascinating about this is, you know, I intentionally wrote this as yield to pedestrian signs. Because you'll sometimes see them and they have the little stop sign symbol, and that's technically wrong because these are not stop signs. Um, when you use that stop sign symbol, you're supposed to stop and that's not. You know, I've had this conversation with the engineers at the, the DOT and we're all on the same page that these are yield signs. These are not stop signs. And you'll write, now that I brought this to your attention, you're all gonna see it as well. Like when you see it in other communities or when they're like in apartment complexes, they're, they're. They're regularly, you know, um, shown a stop sign and they shouldn't be, um, so I just wanted to, uh. Move that we, um. Move forward with, uh, asking DOT and then if they say yes, that we go ahead and purchase one for that. Crosswalk that goes from the SUNY property over to the ridge. So there's already a crosswalk there. All in favor? Aye. And then the other item, um. That I thought would be interesting because these, these three things. Um, at least two of them are, are definitely things that we have asked the DOT about in the past over email, via resolution. Um, singing telegrams, like all the above. Um, but it seemed like it made sense to maybe just like. Write a letter and list them again. And the three that I included, I, and I actually brainstormed this list with. Steve O'Shea and the list includes having. Uh, a pedestrian activated flashing beacon at the intersection of South Side and Route two oh eight. You know, we're all hyper aware of the, the tragedy that recently occurred when, uh. Ray, uh, was, was killed by a, by a vehicle on that section of two oh eight. Um, I think this is a very interesting section of South Chestnut Street because. There are so many people who regularly use that intersection and it's, you know, a curious spot because you have. Um, vehicles that are coming from the south that might not realize that they're entering, um. A crosswalk that's as used as much as this one. So it seems like an RRFB system could be very beneficial. So. I, I would like the, um, the DOT to, um. You know, look at this as an opportunity for them to make their roads as safe as possible for not just vehicles, but also for pedestrians. And, um, the other ask of the three. On this list would be, and this is another conversation that we've had, like. Engineer, uh, design for the crosswalk at Oakwood and Main. So, you know. We're on our third police chief now. Matt Sutton will be the new police chief once. Rob Lucchese officially retires, but when I was a brand new mayor, I was talking about this problem with the former police chief. Uh, Chief Snyder and, um, I think even at the time we. We, you know, made some requests, but you know, it's a very challenging section of Main Street because. Cars will stop as they're heading west to make a left onto South Oakwood. Cars behind them. Don't realize that they're not stopping just because they felt like it, but they're stopping because there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. So, you know. Could this intersection be designed differently? Make it a lot more clear that. The, um, vehicle operators should expect crosswalks, uh, crosswalk users. And then.
I like the idea of the RRFBs of that spot too. I was talking with Brittany from the Assembly Member's Office about that spot.
Cool. Um, well, that, that's going to be, uh, our next. So our third ask within this letter. And we've also asked for this before too. Um, when you think about Main Street, right, the, the, the. Pedestrian portion of the Empire State Trail that goes through New Paltz is our Main Street. Um, so it should be pedestrian friendly. It should be pedestrian welcoming. Um, and I think you can only achieve that if you have places to cross the Main Street. Currently, there are surprisingly very few places to cross our Main Street.
Today, I was going to pick up my kids and there were children crossing. From the middle school in the middle of the street because there was no crosswalk.
At which?
Uh, like between where the middle school is and, uh, and the youth program.
So like where Harrington is and that's on this, right? So like, when you think about, when you think about Main Street. We should, and, and I, I feel like the DOT should invest in their sidewalks and make their, um. Their ramps as ADA accessible as possible as, you know. Ramp friendly as possible, like if that's what is needed to accommodate crosswalks. But we need a crosswalk at these four locations, at Prospect Street, at Harrington Street, at Dusine and at Jolent. All four of those sections along Main Street. Should have crosswalks. Um, I think it is. It blows my mind that between Mannheim and the Tops Plaza. There's not a single place to cross using a crosswalk.
Yeah, it really is not. Those spots at, um, like Harrington, Dusine, Jolent, I'm always seeing kids. Little ones, like.
Nobody's gonna try and pass me. You know, we're talking about putting the flashing sign like. If there's room for someone to pass me there.
And then Prospect is like, that's our hub, our transportation hub.
Right.
Makes no sense that we don't have one there at all.
Yeah, I, I was talking to Brittany from Assembly Member's Office about all of this today. Um, Steve O'Shea's been talking with them and whatnot. And it was interesting just kind of. Looking at like the options that you have, like it's either we request permission, kind of like the first ask for, you know, um. On South Mannheim at Ridge and then we do the thing ourselves, which we can't just do with all this other work that has to be done, you know?
Good, but then we.
That would be insane.
Then you, you know, Nancy would yell at you.
Yeah, well, exactly. Well, and also it just wouldn't make sense. Like, that's just like.
It's, 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 we, we don't invest in state highways. States should invest in state highways.
Exactly. And that was like, basically had a convo with Britt and I went with like, we gotta like, just get this ball rolling and make these asks and. Like keep our state electeds in the loop and we'll just try to nudge. Cause I heard it's a two to three year wait right now with DOT requests. Um, so we're gonna need a lot of nudging.
Yeah, and that's what, what Steve and I were brainstorming about. Let, like, let's put this, like, list. Um, on a piece of paper and then circulate it far and wide, you know, ask our. Elected officials who represent us in Albany to, you know. Refer to this very specific ask, this collection of important improvements. Um, ask the leaders at our state university. Um, who also, you know, care deeply about making sure that their. Customers who, um, attend the university are also protected. Um, but, you know, it only makes sense if you're the state university host community that. You know, the state wants us to succeed. It wants us to be the best host community that we possibly can be and. It would only make sense if we were also, um, making sure that the, um. You know, anyone at the university, you know, has a, has as safe a pedestrian experience as possible. So, you know, the thinking is let's, let's memorialize this ask in a letter. Um, someone interested in taking this list and just making it a letter and then we get to. Say that, uh, it was signed on to by our village board of trustees.
A letter or a resolution?
I, I mean, I, I, I'm perfectly fine with a letter, you know, it's like. You know, otherwise then you gotta do a bunch of wheresses, like cite a bunch of stuff or you could say, you know. Common sense suggests that. The Empire State Trail.
I could work on that.
Okay, great. So, yeah, just, just turn it into, into a, a persuasive letter. And that can be. Recirculated and referenced and, um. Drudged up again and again and again until we see these improvements. Alright, thanks. Uh, so the next item is, um. Um, asking that we authorize our treasurer to begin the process to borrow two point one million dollars to fund the connection. Of the four drinking water wells at our treatment plant property up on Mountain Rest Road. So part of this project, um, we're supposed to receive reimbursement from the New York City DEP. Um, that always takes a fair amount of time. Um, so, what? I think I did make a motion. I think I, did we not vote? Okay, Stevie seconded it and then we all voted, uh, in favor of it, right? I'm pretty sure that's what happened. Um. No problem. Yeah, it's good to triple check it. Um, so the next thing is just that. The, the project has started, um, to connect the groundwater wells that we identified up at the treatment plant property. And now we're running electricity to them and putting pumps in them and creating, um. Some piping so that it can connect to our water plant. So ideally we can. You know, have permanent wells and then buy less. Catscale aqueduct water from, from the DEP, which. Historically has increased in price, um, at seven and a half percent on an annualized basis for the last twenty one years. So someone wanna, um. Second my motion to authorize the treasurer?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And restore New York round eight, the restoration of the Ann Oliver House at Five Broadhead. We have this on here as like a placeholder for an update, but I don't think we're, we have new news to share, right? Right, we, we, uh, shared that at the last meeting, so we're just reminding and including that again in this, during this meeting. And I move that we approve the New Paltz Fire Department Officer Election Results. Uh, any discussion, I just want to say congratulations, but most, uh, more importantly, just like a giant thank you. To the volunteer firefighters. All in favor? Aye. And the next item is, um. Our Arbor Day Declaration. So we have a resolution here. Um, where our village, we'd be declaring the twenty sixth of April as Arbor Day in the village of New Paltz. So we're urging, as part of this resolution is that we're urging all citizens to plant, protect and care for trees. So that they may be enjoyed by this and future generations. Someone on a second, uh, I motion to adopt this resolution. All in favor? I. Move bills and claims.
I think.
All in favor? Talk about the budget? Oh, yeah, yeah, it is, it is on there. Um. I, I didn't really have any new information to share. I, I, I mentioned earlier how to, I wrote something up. I'll. Circulate it amongst the board and as a letter to the paper included on social media. But it's, um, you know, discussion about like how we focus on trying to. Match revenues with expenses so that we can end up with a balanced budget. Um, and I, I, I dared to include. A discussion about parking within that, within that, um, piece.
Awesome.
Because parking revenue from meters and. The mobile parking app as well as overtime tickets, you know, all of that revenue. Is used to offset the expense of having parking enforcement and that, um. Parking enforcement is needed. Um, as has been shared with us by businesses, like for instance, the former owner of the bakery, David Satner said that. His sales on Sunday afternoons actually increased once. We've moved to parking enforcement on Sunday afternoons because what happens when you don't have. A required rotation of parking spots, then cars just camp out. And then you actually end up with less parking, even though some people might prefer not having to pay for park. So I'll, I'll circulate that, that note about, um, our budget and how it relates to. Running a parking enforcement effort.
Sounds good.
Um, Bill is not here, so we'll wait until the next meeting for, uh, planning board liaison update. Unless, did you want to add anything from a county planning board? Okay, and then the, um. ZBA, they actually interviewed a gentleman, his first name is Ian and, um. Recommended that we go ahead and. Appoint Ian as a full member to the planning board. I'm gonna suggest that we. Um, heed their recommendation and appoint Ian, and then we still have two other spots as alternates.
So ZBA?
Yes, ZBA.
Awesome.
Two other spots as alternates because I, I interviewed two other individuals who had expressed interest in serving. So it'd be great if they. Came back to us and said that they, they were indeed interested, but Ian seemed like a, a strong. Fit, um, actually enjoyed that he explained how. He learned about ZBAs from his political science professor, Scott Minkoff at the college. When they were discussing local about remit. I mean, because I didn't know what a ZBA was until I was like. Many decades old and that's cool that he learned about it in college. Um.
Shout out.
Shout out to, exactly. Um. And then as far as, uh, applications before the ZBA, the, the one, um. That they were definitely discussing last night is there was a, an application. So in the Gateway District. You can have a retail space of a certain size and there's a proposal for a. Uh, tenant within the Wells Fargo building, which would then not be, um. A hundred percent Wells Fargo. I don't know if like they would continue to have an ATM or not, but the point is that, that there was a, a, a large space. That they wanted to use for a fitness gym and the space that they. Were looking to occupy would be larger than the space. So, and, and I forget the exact numbers, but let's say that in that. Zone, you could have a one hundred square foot retail space and they want to put in a retail space that's a hundred and fifty square feet. They were looking for a, a variance that would allow them to have that larger space for a gym use. And, um, the ZBA discussed that and set a public hearing for that ask to be considered, for that variance to be considered. Was there another autumn, was there another ZBA application that I'm drawing up like on? Right, so there's a, a new business that wanted to serve some, some beer and wine and snacks. To augment their retail offerings.
Drive Chappelle.
Yes.
Cool.
And, um. But the way our code is currently. Articulated, you're not able to do that because of proximity to schools or houses of worship. So that's why they were pursuing a variance, but meanwhile there are. Numerous other. Businesses with liquor licenses on that street. So. That, that was it as far as ZBA updates.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to, uh. Move that we go into. executive session to discuss a personnel item. But we don't, I do not anticipate that we're gonna take any action when we return from executive session. So if you guys, someone wanna um, second my motion to go into exec session? One favor? And it was a, a discussion about personnel, but you know, just to add color, none of our staff need to be worried about um, job security. That's your motion? I second Stana's, shall we adjourn motion?
Aye.